Meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of La Grange. We will begin with an invocation from Father Tim with St. Peter's Catholic Church to be followed by the Fledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. My name is every living God, you are the Creator of all things and source of life. We pray for the gift of life and the gift of opportunity. We thank you for the leaders of our city council and our mayor for all they do for our the well-being of our community and inspire them as our citizens, we are inspired by their leadership, govern us in your wisdom, knowledge, and grace. We ask all these things through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I'm glad to be here with you and for the council and especially to say goodbye to you. I don't know how to say goodbye. It's a privilege to be in La Grange and since I've been here for five years and you, we work together in different things, Blue Mass and other things, and you've been a wonderful inspiration to me and my own people. I want to give you congratulations. You're really missed.
Thank you, Father Tim. I appreciate that.
Don't put that in the record.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
We are sponsored by your sponsor. But God bless you and your endeavors, okay?
Thank you, Father Tim. I appreciate you saying that. Appreciate you being here tonight and all you do in ministry in our community. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on October 11th. I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Tonight, under delegations, we have invited the Tripp County Board of Elections and Registration to come and share a few updates with us about the ongoing special election for city council District Two to replace Councilman McCamey. So I would invite, I get Chairman Stump if you would like to, or Andy, or who. If you will introduce yourself for the record and for the council, I think everyone knows you, but just.
I'm Bill Stump. I'm currently the chairman of the Tripp County Board of Elections. And you know, we had a mistake on the ballot that is now being voted. We want to bring that to your attention. Andy is handing out, and Andy is our election supervisor. Just a little history. When we prepared the ballot, we sent the ballot off to a ballot maker. And they put the ballot together and there was an error in the ballot and we just missed it. The error is that, that's in the city council race. All the other races were fine. The error in the city council race is that, as you all know, it's a district race and not only those voters in District Two can vote in that race, but the way the ballot was constructed, it was constructed as in that large race as opposed to a district race. So when you go to vote, and I'll tell you about what I've done to fix it. If you're in District One, the machine will allow you to cast a ballot in that District Two race. That's the gist of a mistake. As soon as we found out about it, which was right afternoon before the early voting started on Monday, we immediately looked at it, found that we in fact had made an error and the ballot was incorrect. We called the Secretary of State's office, said, here's what we have, what should we do to correct it? And the advice and direction of the Secretary of State's office, they said, it's too late to change the ballot. You know, one of the ballot that appears on the screen, all the behind the scenes things, it captures the ballots and so forth, said, go ahead and allow the race to continue, but tell everyone what's going on. So at all the polling places during the regular election, we will say that there is an error on the ballot. And if you're in District One and you vote in this District Two race, that your ballot will be, not your ballot, but your vote in that one race will be disregarded. Your ballot will not be disregarded, just get one vote that you were technically ineligible to cast for a District Two candidate. And they said, here's the procedure that we will follow. And that's what I've handed out to you all. Again, the Secretary of State, as soon as we talked to them, they said, here's how we handle it. And the kind of Cliff Notes version of that is when we begin to, when we do the report at the end of the night on November 8th, when we count all the ballots, we will download those votes cast in the city council race. And we'll be on the phone with the Secretary of State's office. We will download those to an Excel spreadsheet. If all those votes that were cast in District One in error will be disregarded. So only those votes cast by the eligible voters in District Two will count in that race. Again, we will make, and we've also decided, once those numbers are, they'll be in the totals, so we'll have the correct counts for that. Two weeks after the election, the Secretary of State always asked us to do a hand count or an audit of a race. And then they picked the race. My guess is it would either be the gubernatorial race or the center race. And we'll go in and count those ballots. To be sure there's no question about the council race, we will also count that race and be sure that all the ballots that were cast are identified and we make a clear delineation of those in District One and District Two and ones in District Two are eliminated. Again, once a ballot is cast, we don't know whose ballot it is. We don't know if it's yours, Mr. Arrington, or yours, Mr. Dutton. It's all we know is it's a vote. And so when we look at that pool of votes for city council, we will extract those from District One and eliminate those.
I have two questions. Yeah, I have a question as well. And you just said what you did about, you don't know if it's Dr. Edmondson's vote or Mr. Arrington's vote. But what you do know is that you have a ballot, and my ballot, for example, that I submitted, whether paper or electronically, my ballot is a Hollis Hand precinct ballot in a certain council district, a certain state rep district. I mean, you know, you can identify that ballot. You can't, don't know if it's mine or if it's Mark Mitchell's, but you know that that ballot is supposed to be eligible to vote in this particular House district, this particular senate district, this particular council district. And that's how you will make that delineation.
And to expand on that, there are about 55 different combinations of ballots. Once you go in and you sign in at the poll pad and you get your card, and that card that you put in the machine reads that you're a District One voter in the Hollis Hand district, this is who it is. And this is the ballot.
He doesn't know that it's Jim Thornton, but he knows that this ballot is.
This voter gets this ballot of the 55 different combinations that we have in this election. So when Andy and his staff review the ballots, remember there's 55 different variations depending on where you are in the county, the city, what district you're in, who else you want to vote for.
And you know which of those 55 are eligible to vote in the District Two council race? And that's how you're able to only count eligible voters and not? And my other question is, because I've had this asked a lot to me from people who've lived in District One and are voting, is there any distinction between whether they accidentally vote in an election they're not supposed to vote in, or whether they know better and leave it blank? It's not going to invalidate their vote for governor or senator?
It will not be deemed illegal vote. It is an eligible cause, it's in District One for a District Two race that should have been set up on the ballot to be a district race as opposed to that large race. So that's why we just, we just discontinue.
I have two questions. The first question is, how can we, what do you have in place to make sure that this will not happen again?
That's a great question. We've been doing this, Andy's been doing it for a long time, I've been doing it for a while, and this is the first time that it's happened. All that I can tell you is we will go through them in extra time and be sure, you know, the procedures in place to look at each race. And we can go down to point to be sure everybody's name spelled correctly and that it's in the right order, you know, the state code. We had a couple of questions about, you know, why didn't we list things in a certain order that we didn't? You know, that's not up to us. The Secretary of State's office, you know, whatever the race is, whether it's the gubernatorial race or the center race or a house race, the state code says how those names appear on the ballot, I mean, what order, whether they're alphabetical and if it's not alphabetical, you know, the, I think, and this is the close answer is that whoever, whatever candidate got the most votes in the prior gubernatorial race, that's the party that gets the top heading.
My next question is, there's a lot of distrust in the black community with voting anyway. How can we assure our community that this process will be done fairly? Because we're thinking that if they can go in and pick and choose and pick out votes that's not supposed to be there, couldn't they do that ordinarily on other races as well?
I guess the answer is theoretically yes, in practicality no. First of all, I don't know if it's Jim's or yours, you know, I don't know the votes that are cast, if they're a wider block, then which ones am I, which ones am I going to pull out? All that I can say, and one of the gentlemen spoke in our board meeting on Thursday, asked a very similar question. You're telling me now you can fix this for us? Well, there are different terms of fixing. We are going, we will identify those ballots cast, those votes cast in District One for the District Two race. We will clearly identify those and we'll eliminate them. And we will do, you know, we'll do that on election night and then two weeks later, we'll go through a hand count. And what I wish I'd asked a gentleman who was speaking to us on Thursday, is come and watch us count on Thursday and come back and watch us do it again. And I hope that will make you comfortable. We have five members on the Board of Elections who will be there both times. They will be there the night of the election and they'll be there for the recount. And I agree, I mean, there's distrust, not, you know, it's not just the black community. I mean, there's just basic distrust about the election process throughout. You know, the Democrats don't trust Republicans, Republicans don't trust Democrats, blacks don't trust whites, and vice versa. You know, all we can tell you is the election board is here to put the race on, have a place for folks to vote, be sure they're properly manned, and we collect the ballots, we count them, and we report them, and we audit them after the fact. And in the time I've been on the election board, I've been very happy with the performance of the staff in the elections office. And Andy's done a good job, but we have never had, in the time I've been involved, any question raised about any of the elections. And again, I'm sorry for the air. I know it seems tragic, we all make mistakes, but we do. But we looked at, we get 55 races and that one slipped through and we're sorry. And again, as soon as we, as soon as we saw it, we raised our hand and said we made a mistake. Now, if we were going to hide it, we sure wouldn't have said anything. You know, the easy thing is that we made a mistake, here it is, and we have always been as transparent as possible. And we will continue to do that anytime that. Any of you all or any citizens of the county or city have a question, we'll be glad to walk them through the process and hope to restore whatever confidence we've lost.
Other questions from the council?
I have a few.
Okay.
Trust. I like that.
I hope you do.
I like that word. You know, one of my favorite politicians was George Bush. He said, trust but verify. And we talking about people in District One casting votes in District Two, which technically would be a crime. But you said, it's not a crime, right? Would the state attorney general be willing to issue blanket immunity to anybody? In other words, write a letter giving everybody in District One immunity from being prosecuted in District, for voting in a race in District Two? And this is the only reason why I say this, because in Florida, there were people that were issued voter registration cards that were convicted felons. They came back a couple of years later and arrested them for voting in previous elections. Now, I'm sure they were told, in fact, I saw one interview, if you're issued a voter registration card, it's okay for you to vote. You're saying it's okay, but can you verify that?
I'm saying it's okay, but I'm not going to count.
Can we get a letter of immunity from the state attorney general saying that no one can be prosecuted?
I will, I will request a letter, whether they write it or not, I don't know, but I don't, again, it's a, it's an error that's been brought to everyone's attention, so it's like no one's trying to sneak in with.
Fair enough.
False ID or a voter registration that don't belong to them and they're trying to cast in a legal ballot. They are, they are a legal voter who is voting in a race that they're able to by technical error.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. I mean, at least you'll ask. That's all.
Yeah, I will.
The other thing is, first of all, I am Nathan Gaskin, and I don't know if you know who I am. Do you know how I got elected?
No, I don't.
Somebody committed a crime and he was removed from the ballot. The election office didn't catch that either, but I digress from that because they did. Okay? Andy Harper received a phone call because the candidate was turned away. He came back to resubmit and was allowed to resubmit. He was turned away because he was not a resident long enough. Andy was the one that allowed him to submit that request to be a part of the election after he received a phone call. Question is, who did he receive it from? I asked you this when I got, when I registered, who allowed him to submit it? Okay? That question was never answered. And since we're talking about trust and transparency, okay? Since then, that person has been adjudicated by the state attorney general for the crime of perjury. Let's fast forward. Hold, hold, and no, stop right there. Let me finish.
I don't understand the school.
I'm going to help you out. No, no, let me help you out.
Well, I don't know that we need to get into.
No, no. Let me finish. Let me finish. Okay? So that was in District Two. So here we are in District Two again, and there's another problem. Now, I had to call for an investigation the last time. Your office did not. I did. And you're telling me that, well, there's no need to investigate this, we already know what's going on. If this was a governor's race, Brian Kemp's election and Stacey Abrams, and there was an error, discrepancy there, and then you have it again on the next election cycle, don't you think that's worthy of an investigation?
Let me say this about, whenever he qualified, he signed that oath and that's what we have to go by.
I understand.
That's the oath that was taken by him. He signed it, notarized it. He's the one that took that oath. And he is swearing and affirming, just like whenever you take the oath in this office here, that's the oath that he took, that he lived there. That's what we have to go by. And then it got brought to our attention and that's when our board had a hearing.
That is correct. I brought it to your attention. Now, again, if lightning strikes twice in the same spot, how, I mean, at what point in time do you get a clue and say, this is worthy of an investigation? If you're talking about trust, how say you?
I don't know how you trust, I don't know how you investigate a mistake. If there had been some allegation of fraud that's been committed, then I would say, yes, bring, you know, let's, let somebody come and look. This was a simple error on how the ballot was constructed. Again, we brought everyone's attention. We're going to count the ballots as we always do in public. We'll do it again two weeks later and we'll invite any and all folks to come. Then, if there's some question of, did we legally count those ballots? Did we handle the voting discrepancies, if you will, the removal of those District One ballots out? Then if there's some findings that we didn't do that right, then we'll call for an investigation. But just to, here are the procedures. We know there were, picking number, 500 votes cast in the District Two race. And we identify those and we know that 15 of those ballots were cast in District One. And we'll remove those. So now we know there were 485 votes for that council seat. Now, if we get there and there are 500 votes and all of a sudden, there were, and the numbers don't work and there were, there weren't 15 taken out, there were 35 taken out. Or they were taken out from some individual. And these ballots, once we identify who the District One ballots are, we take them out. We don't take them out, well, we'll take one from you and we'll take one from him and him. We just take the ballots out wherever they fell. So again, all that I can say is, so to go back to your question about trust, is everything we do is in the light of day and I invite you to come and watch.
And as a representative of District Two, I can honestly say that District Two has become a lightning rod for problems. And I do not think that this will be the last one. And I'm going on record to say that. And I'm saying that because at the end of this conversation that you're giving, if I do not hear the word investigation, it is in my mind that I will call the state attorney general myself for an investigation.
And, you know, we talked to the Secretary of State's office, we talked to an attorney, and they said, there's no need to go forward with an investigation. If you feel it's an appropriate request from you as a city council member to do that, then that's certainly appropriate.
So from the process standpoint, first, let me say, I appreciate y'all being here and I appreciate the transparency and the acknowledgement of the mistake and the, you know, acknowledging that there's been this issue created and you're trying to work through it. From a process standpoint, as I understand it, with the guidance of the Secretary of State's office and whoever at the state, you are conducting this election, going, people are voting, people are voting today, I mean, the election is ongoing and that you'll follow their procedure on the county and so forth. And any of the candidates can, can challenge that election. And if you determine that this process hasn't worked or you've undergone errors and so forth, then there would be a further discussion, investigation of this particular election. But I think what, and this is not exactly what Councilman Gaskin's going to, but I think where, where I think where he, one way he could go, he's talking about this, is we need to have some assurance if the Tripp County Board of Elections is going to continue running city elections, and there's probably going to be one in the spring, potentially as a special election, and then there's going to be a regular election next fall. You want to have some confidence that these issues have been addressed and that these issues are being, that all procedures are in place, that all safeguards are in place, and that there's opportunity for the council members as well as staff to, to work with you in the open, transparent process to make sure that lightning doesn't strike a third time, right? That there's not a, that in next year's council election, that there's not a problem with the District Two balloting, or District One, or the mayoral. So, yeah.
Sure. If the city wants to have someone meet with us, once we get the registration process over, the qualifications, and we build a ballot, we'll be glad to sit down with a representative from the city, the city attorney and say, here's the ballot and here's what the instructions are to the ballot builder. And it's, if it's a mayor, it's at large, it was for council, it's district, and again, we have nothing to hide. We, you know, shine the light on us and if you want to have a representative there to go over the ballot as it is, we'd be glad to welcome that.
Yeah, I appreciate you offering that. I think that, I mean, that's, that's, I think, I think that's where we want to be able to represent to the citizens of La Grange who are eligible voters regardless of district, that the, that everything is being done by the book in the light of, light of day. Okay. Any other comments or questions for the Board of Elections?
Mr.
Okay. Thank y'all again for being here. Appreciate you taking the time. All right. We'll move on to petitions and communications. We have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request for a special use permit at 1301 and 1311 Greenville Street. Ms. Kelsey?
Mr. Costello gives his report, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Consistent with our discussion this morning during your work session, on Monday, October the 17th, our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended the approval of a special use permit for two parcels located in the 1300 block of Greenville Street as requested by a representative with Universal Environmental Services. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a special use permit, I'm sorry, is to schedule this special use permit request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, November the 22nd.
Call for a hearing. Second. Have a motion, second, call public hearing, any discussion. All in.
Do we answer any questions that were raised during the first meeting?
I've reached out. The applicant was not able to make contact with him. I know that he's in the audience this evening, so he and I will either have a conversation or I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. So I have a motion, second, to call public hearing, any discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation for proposed UDO text amendments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Consistent with discussions that we had this morning during the work session, staff is recommending two amendments, text amendments to select portions of our unified development ordinance. These proposed amendments are unanimously recommended for adoption by our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals during a meeting held on Monday, October the 17th. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to set these proposed text amendments for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, November the 22nd.
Motion called.
Go ahead.
Motion called, public hearing. Second. Have a motion, a second, call public hearing, any discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Costello. We'll move on to reports. Do any council members have anything they would like to report tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report that we're going to, we've been tossing around and trying to come up with the right time to do it. And McGregor Street School, we would like to, I see Mrs. Cox's family in this evening at night, so it's going to be a surprise to them, we'd like to name that Miss Eleanor Cox after Miss Eleanor Cox, who worked there for many years. And I think it'd be most appropriate if we named that school after her, if it's okay with the family.
Okay. So that, we will have that at future discussion. I think there's also been, council's also talking about naming the park on White's Hill Street for the, for Mr. Cox.
Linear Park, yes.
Yeah, for Mr. Cox. So there'll be some discussion item. And I believe that, I understand from the city clerk, that members of the Cox family may be planning to attend our work session on November the 8th to have further discussion about, about some of those ideas.
Yes, I just wanted to bring out about the school.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate you sharing that. Councilman Mary?
No report.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Moore?
No report, Mr. Moore.
Yes, we do have a report. There has been some chatter on the internet and in the community about a coach that was removed from his job for breaking the table. Some in his family feel that it was repercussions from him, for him being removed, not because of the table, but because of political statements that were made by some of his family members. I'd just like to remind the council that we had a memorandum of understanding that we would do business with those people who did not discriminate against people for their religious beliefs, sexual orientations, or political views. If this is true, then we ourselves are in violation of our own memorandum of understanding. And I would like for us to take a hard look at what happened, how it happened, what's the commission involved in any way? Were school board employees out of line? And if so, we need to rethink all of our agreements with all of these entities as per our own memorandum. our own memorandum. With that being said, I think that it is a good thing to have an understanding and working with these entities, but if, if they are being vindictive, then we do not need to do business with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Okay, I'll move on to resolutions. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Troup County regarding a water line extension.
Yes, sir. As we discussed this morning at work session, this involves replacing a water line that goes out and into Pine Road Park and to the new Afuski Center. Staff would recommend moving forward with this, and just as a note, financially, Troup County would bear the burden of this water line.
Okay. The resolution-
Motion to approve resolution, second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution, any discussion? All in favor of approving the resolution, uplift the right hand. All opposed, uplift the right hand. So that resolution passes by a vote of four to one. Okay. I will move on to a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Troup County School System regarding natural gas extension.
Again, Mr. Mayor, we discussed this at work session. This is a new gas line that would extend to the new Rosemont School. The Board of Education would participate in the cost at the tune of $125,000. Staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve resolution, second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution for the gas extension, any discussion? If you would approve this resolution, please uplift the right hand.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And if you're opposed, uplift the right hand. Okay? So that resolution passes by a vote of four to one. Okay, we'll move on to the final resolution, which is authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Greenville regarding utility, mutual aid, and assistance.
Yes, sir. From time to time, Greenville reaches out and needs help on the utility side, and we provide that help. So, very similar to what we did with the city of Grantville, we would just like a document in place for them to cover those costs of labor and materials that are provided to the cities.
But approve, second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution, is there any discussion?
Oh, yes. I don't have any problem with Greenville.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Throw that out there.
Thank you for telegraphing that to me. Okay. So that passes unanimously. First reading of ordinances. We have an ordinance removing parking restrictions from the former Center Plaza Drive.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code so as to remove parking restrictions related to the former Center Plaza Drive to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right. And then we will move on to second reading of ordinances, where I have an ordinance rezoning property located in 510 Springdale Drive from suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood residential. At work session, council discussed the possibility of introducing a substitute ordinance that would add some conditions to the proposed rezoning, different from what was read two weeks ago. If I can, before I see if there is a motion to introduce the substitute ordinance, can I ask the city attorney to just remind council what the conditions are that have been proposed as part of the substitute ordinance?
Yes, there are three conditions. First, the development will be restricted to the building typology of detached house, which excludes cottage house, cottage court, two-family dwelling, attached house, or garage apartment. The second restriction in this substitute will limit the number of curb cuts on the Springdale Drive to two. And also, finally, the third thing, the Springdale Drive lots will be, will have a minimum lot frontage of 75 feet.
So those are written as conditions on the rezoning to the TNR?
That's right.
That's in the substitute ordinance. Is there a motion to authorize the introduction of the substitute ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to authorize the introduction of the substitute ordinance. If you, any discussion?
So are we going to do a traffic study to check out, see if we need to put stop signs there on all the streets?
So I think it would be in order, depending on what you do with the, depending on what you do with the ordinance, I think it would be in order to direct staff to conduct such a traffic study.
Okay.
If you would like to do so as a separate action item.
Okay.
All right. So I have a motion, a second, to authorize the introduction of the substitute ordinance, which we would then read the substitute ordinance, and then have a second vote whether or not to adopt it. So have a motion, a second, to authorize the introduction of the substitute ordinance. If you approve the motion, please uplift the right hand. Okay, thank you. And if you oppose the motion, please uplift the right hand. Okay? So the motion to authorize the substitute ordinance passes four to one. I will now ask the city attorney to read the substitute ordinance.
A substitute ordinance of mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify with conditions the used sort of real estate located on Springdale Drive and owned by David and Janice DeShields to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Move, approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the substitute ordinance, any discussion? All aye.
I might make a comment that, of course, we all know this is a very sensitive subject and, and lots of controversy. And what we feel like we have seen here is a type of compromise and working to try to allay the concerns of the neighborhood to some degree. The rezoning would limit the number of driveways on Springdale, would increase the lot size on the side that faces Springdale. And we realize that the lot sizes are smaller than some in Springdale, but they're also similar in size to many others in, in the Springdale neighborhood. And we will be wanting to encourage the city to do everything they can with the traffic, as Mr. Gaskin's mentioned. So I think for, for myself, those are the reasons why I felt that the substitute ordinance was appropriate and acceptable.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to also concur with that. That was one of my reasons for voting along with it, because if we left it like it is, they could have maybe three houses there and also two garage apartments there. So this designation would be much better than what is already currently in place. And infield, we've been talking about infield, and so we're trying our best to do the proper infield, which was, will be homes, and especially in that area. It's such a nice area, we want to make sure that we continue to keep it that way, so that's, that's why I was going along with it.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, any more discussion? If you would approve the adoption of the substitute ordinance, please uplift your right hand. Okay, thank you. And if you're opposed, uplift the right hand.
Aye.
Okay. So the substitute ordinance is adopted by a vote of four to one. Okay. Oh, the traffic's, yeah.
Before we move forward, could I make a motion that we ask the city manager to contact the police department and move forward with a traffic study to see if a four-way stop at that intersection at Gordon, Piney Woods, and Springdale and Sanor, Sanor Drive would be appropriate? And if so, bring that information back to us so we can vote on that.
Second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to ask the staff to conduct a traffic study with the recommendation back to, to the council. Any discussion on the motion? All right, if you would approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Thanks, sir. The good news for tonight, we're expecting to have possibly the biggest turnout for our litter cleanup November 5th, that's the Saturday. The Kiwanis Club is our partner, and they have invited Rotary, Optimus, and Lions Club, also other community partners, First Presbyterian, and Burt Weathersby. Of course, we're going to be on the steps of Burt Weathersby, and that is also the area of the most recent section of the thread and the location of the future. So we're really excited about our next litter.
Great. Look forward to seeing everybody there. We stand adjourned.